Alamance County is pleased to present the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our September 18th meeting of the Alamance County Board of Commissioners. And before we begin, I'm going to ask Commissioner Byrd if he will do our invocation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In recognition of the wide diversity of faiths that we have in our community, I would like to offer a moment of silence so that each of us can pray in our own way, or not at all. And as we do, I'd like to ask that we please remember the victims of Hurricane Irma that came through our country not too long ago. And I understand that there's another Hurricane Maria that has really gained strength that's kind of taken the same path, so let's remember the potential victims of that. And also, let's remember why we're here, so that we can govern our county. Let's remember the victims and survivors of human trafficking, domestic violence and sexual assault, those that are suffering from other forms of oppression, enslavement, abuse, crime, and social injustices, those that are homeless and hungry, especially our children, those are those that are suffering from mental and physical illnesses and the challenges of aging. And let's remember our first responders. With these things in mind, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have some folks signed up for public speaking. And actually, there are a couple on here with the brunch bill. We are going to do a public hearing on that. If you want to speak now, that's fine, or if you want to just wait until we delve into that, then that'll be fine, too. First, we have Mr. Walter Allison.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Walter Allison. I'm a citizen in Burlington, North Carolina. I was born and raised here in Alamance County. I am a Vietnam veteran. Also, I'm retired from the Burlington Fire Department with 29 years' service, and I still reside here in Alamance County. First of all, I want to thank Amy and Mr. Byrd for coming to our homeless student forum this past week. I was looking for you, brother, son.
I apologize. I wasn't there. I admit it.
But I'm here to talk about the statue outside the courthouse. And what I brought with me was, those of you who endorsed the Confederacy, I want to read you what the Confederate Constitution says. It says in Article 1, Section 9, Clause 4, "It prohibited the Confederate government from restricting slavery in any way. No bill or attainance ex post facto law or law denying or impairing the right of property in Negro slaves shall be passed." Article 4, Section 2, also prohibits states from interfering with slavery. "The citizens of each state shall be entitled to all the privileges and immunities of citizens in the several states and have the right of transit and sojourn in any state of this Confederacy with their slaves and property. And the right of property in said slaves shall not be therefore impaired." Article 4, Section 3, Clause number 3, perhaps the most menacing provision of the Confederate States Constitution, the Confederate States may acquire new territory. "And Congress shall have power to legislate and provide governments for the inhabitants of all territories belonging to the Confederate States lying without the limits of the several states and permit them at such times and in such manner as it may be lawfully provided to form states to be admitted into the Confederacy. In all such territories, the institution of Negro slavery as it now exists in the Confederate States shall be recognized and protected by Congress and by the territorial government. And the inhabitants of the several Confederate States and territories shall have the right to take such territory, any slaves lawfully held by them in any of the states or territory of the Confederate States." The Confederate States. That means you cannot lawfully not have slaves if you didn't want to. That means that that statue standing outside the courthouse represents this constitution. That statue standing outside the courthouse represents slavery. It represents Jim Crow laws, even the lynching of one of your own fellow town council commissioners, constables of the town of Graham, North Carolina, white outlaw. He was lynched just feet from where that statue stands. And if you endorse the Confederacy, you endorse lynching and murder. Thank you very much.
Just want to make a reminder, three minutes on our speeches. That's okay. You didn't go over too far. All right. Next, we have Richard Johnson.
Well, I'm also here to talk about the statue. I'm a 25-year resident of Burlington. My wife was born and raised here. When a statue stands like that, it needs to represent all of us, and it obviously does not. But it didn't even represent all of us in 1860. North Carolina took a popular vote on secession. Here are the results. 47,323 against, 46,672 for. And it was only white males. The white male voters of this state rejected secession. Alamance County, here's the vote. 254 for secession, 1,114 against secession. That statue, which was put up in 1914, didn't even represent all of us, obviously, in 1860. It didn't even represent the whites. Today, we need to find something we can agree on. That statue should be retired and be allowed to rest in peace, just like one of my great-grandparents, great-great-great-grandfather Wash Sigmund, who was a sergeant in the Confederate Army, was wounded at the Battle of Crater. He now rests in peace. But also, another one, John Huey, a North Carolina man, who remained loyal and served with the Union. Both of those men now rest respectfully in peace. That statue should be sent to a museum to do that, too. And we should find some way to represent our common values. Everyone in this room, whether you're in favor of that statue or not, I think believes in democracy, believes in our republic, and believes that everyone has the right to have equal rights now in this nation. That's what any statue out there in front of our courthouse should say. That statue does not say that. It says what this gentleman just pointed out. And I've also read those things, same things in the Constitution of the Confederacy. He's absolutely correct. And if you're wondering where I got the numbers for Alamance County, they came off of your county website, and I checked them against other sources. The people of Alamance County in 1860 voted against secession. You need to keep that in mind when we put up a statue that glorifies that. Let's let it rest in peace and move on like my ancestors did. Find some way to represent the values that we all share, whether we're in favor of that statue or not. We all share the values of equal rights today. That's what any statue up there should say now. Thank you.
All right. Next, Latoya McCandies.
I was going to wait, if it's okay.
That'd be fun. Jim, you want to wait?
Yeah.
Okay. Melissa Peter. Can't really read it. Oh, okay. Here she comes. The lady on the bottom of the list.
Mo Lissy.
Mo Lissy. I'm sorry, I couldn't.
I was named after my grandma.
Oh, good. Okay.
Hi. I want to say thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Mo Lissy Peterson, and I'm the director of the Alamance Academy. It's a local mental health provider. At any rate, we started out in 2007, and we did, and we still do, Level 2 residential treatment for boys. And our agency is growing, and we currently do other services, some of them in-kind. And we do peer support services. We also help to transition. We've been successful in transitioning over 80 people out of group home placement into independent living and into jobs or being a useful part of our community, participating. And we're interested in the building on Graham-Huptdale Road. And we would like to collaborate with other nonprofits in our area, which we currently do now, in helping the whole community. And we just feel like with that being in one location, it would be a really good benefit for the citizens of Alamance County in whole. I don't know if you guys have any questions. We do substance abuse treatment as well.
Our attorney is going to bring that up. And if you will hang around, we may have some questions on that when he goes over.
Let's have a few things if you guys.
That'd be good, when quiet goes over.
Okay.
I'm sorry I didn't recognize your name there.
I scribbled.
That's okay.
Please forgive me. Thank you.
All right. With that said, Commissioner, responses?
Well, I'd like to say thank you to the speakers tonight. And I've not read the Confederate Constitution, so you've inspired me to go read that, Walter. Thank you very much. And Richard, thank you very much for your comments.
I'll echo thank you for y'all coming out and making your comments. I just want to say that, Mr. Allison, you know, I have a lot of respect for you and your work in the community. And I just want to say that I think that we can, a person can support keeping the statue without endorsing lynching and murder. That doesn't mean, you know, if a person wants to keep the statue, that doesn't mean that they necessarily support or endorse the values of the Confederacy, or lynching or murder, anything like that. So that's all I wanted to say.
I'm fine. Okay. Thank y'all for coming.
Can I say something?
Well, we don't really have you on the list.
I know it, dear, but I didn't know I wanted to say anything.
Come up here and state your name, ma'am.
My name is Margaret Damer, and I want everybody in here to understand that I do not believe in slavery, period. But I do admire that stature. I remember when I was a little girl, my mother would bring me up here to Graham, and I still admire that stature, and nobody can change it. And it does not represent slavery to me. I'm 86 years old, and I remember a lot. And I'd like to tell these people someday about what I know and what I feel. Everybody got their own opinions and their own feelings, but it does not represent. I got some real close friends that are black, and nothing bothers me.
Thank you, Margaret. All right. Approval of the agenda?
May I make a motion to reapprove the agenda?
I'll second it. Thank you, Amy. Thanks, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we will have our public hearing for the flood damage prevention ordinance and revision.
Consent agenda. Mr. Chairman. Consent agenda.
Oh, consent agenda. I'm sorry. Consent agenda. Is there anything we'd like to pull out of that?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we will move on to the flood damage prevention. Libby's got, how many pages, Libby?
Oh.
About 50, I think, so. Anybody ever wants to know about our floodplain ordinances, now's a good time to learn.
Yeah. So we're here tonight to review the changes to the flood damage prevention ordinance as we advertised. These are needed because FEMA has sent us updated maps, and associated with that is an update to the model ordinance provided by the Department of Public Safety Floodplain Division. Basically, having this ordinance allows us to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, which makes us eligible for FEMA aid and makes people eligible to buy subsidized federal insurance through the program. That's only in the 100-year floodplain, so this ordinance only applies to properties within that 100-year floodplain. So I've got a presentation here. Please stop me if I get too detailed. I'm prepared to go through each one of the optional items, should you want. I'm going to lean on you guys to tell me how you want this to proceed.
Libby, this presentation that you're about to present, these are just summarizing the changes from the current ordinance?
The ones she showed us last time, basically.
Basically, this is the same, well, it is all the same stuff that was shown last time. I actually have, sorry, I don't have my appropriate gear here.
You sent us several documents, or a few documents, and some of them are quite lengthy.
Quite a few.
And I was hoping we weren't going to go through.
No.
Yeah.
I think her thing is, if we have any questions on some of the changes, because a lot of it's just what was there previously.
It was there, what's previous, is what was previously there.
Right.
So the model ordinance provided by the NC Department of Public Safety actually is color-coded, so that you can very easily see what the changes are. Blue items are altered from the 2007 version. Actually, included a document in there with, you know, if words changed, definitions changed, I underline those changes. Items that are green are new to the 2017 version. There are some that are optional, some that they do not present as optional. There are a couple items that are red and struck through. That means they've been removed from the ordinance. So I do have a short list of, I kind of went item by item through what changed. I think this is probably the best summary that'd just be quick right off the top. So they've added some purpose statements. Those are non-optional. There are some new required and optional definitions. Obviously, part of the whole point of this is to adopt the new dates for the FEMA maps. They have increased the fines for violations. I'll give you a moment. Sorry.
Was that me?
They increased the fines for violations. That went from $50 to $100. We try our best to work with people before we even get to fines, but they have a new basis for vertical survey data, so this is the fun engineering part. There's some new guidance for what, how we do our substantial improvement calculations, so that's something that staff does when you want to improve or change properties that are in the floodplain. Same thing for replacement utilities. There's new regulations on gas and liquid storage tanks, so you can probably imagine where that could be.
Especially empty tanks. I read that about empty tanks.
An issue in the floodplain area. You also don't want them, you know, lifting up and tipping over and filling up contents everywhere. But new guidance on what's considered other development. And as a new severability clause, that's pretty standard in most ordinances, basically saying if one piece of the ordinance gets invalidated by court, that it doesn't throw out the whole ordinance. So. I have a couple more slides just to kind of explain the larger picture. I won't get into the nitty-gritty details quite yet, but I told you the model ordinance is provided by the Department of Public Safety. Most of these items are already in our ordinance currently. That was done in 2006. Planning Board did review this at their August 10th meeting and has provided a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And an annotated ordinance is provided in the agenda that shows all that. We have to adopt these maps by November 17th. We're considered non-conforming, and we will be removed from the flood insurance program. No questions. It's just going to happen. There's a FEMA publication in your agenda as well that explains some of that. This model ordinance has been approved by FEMA already. So basically, our Department of Public Safety has gone, has worked with FEMA to create this ordinance, so we have a ready-made ordinance that will get through FEMA. And I will stop there, because then we get into the real nitty-gritty.
Yeah. One of the questions I had a little bit about was like accessory buildings, and I noticed we have our head inspector over here in the corner hiding, and I think it was, what, 150 square feet, $3,000 on the
Value.
Value of it.
That's great. They would be
We're clear on those, right? Okay.
I'm clear on it.
I didn't know where that came from, but.
That directly from Department of Public Safety. So those would be considered basically exempt, so they wouldn't have to meet flood design standards.
Even if they're in the flood?
Even if they're in the floodplain.
Yeah.
They're exempt.
And one other question, of course, which came from Saxha is parking lots and so forth. How are we addressing that?
Well, the big thing to remember is if it's not in the 100-year floodplain, this ordinance does not apply.
Okay.
100-year floodplain.
100
So the second part of that is the ordinance does not prohibit you from developing in the floodplain. It just puts additional standards on engineering
Of what you
And taking into account the effects of what you do downstream. So it's not that you can't, it's just there's some increased standards.
Right. Okay. And of course, the engineering plot and those elevations is, that's been there, it's just.
Yeah, that's been there all along. Basically, if we see on our GIS maps that you're going to be really, really close, now this isn't for a property that has, you know, a piece of floodplain way down on the other end, and you're obviously out of it, that's a no-brainer. You don't, you know, you're fine. But if it's really, really close on those maps, or you're putting an extension on that may get you even closer, depending on the situation, but most of the time, we're going to ask for a survey.
And as that comes to planning on the original, that will move right in front?
Yes, we take care of it at that point.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner? Amy, you've been on that board, cross-eyed, looking at all of these.
I did not. I'm good.
I can't remember what it was. There's one item that was optional that the Planning Board recommended not including.
Would that be for the non-conversion agreement, perhaps?
I'm not sure. And it was towards the end of the original document.
We can go through a few of these. Inclusion of tiny homes?
Hey, yeah, I think that was something that was a little bit different there.
Right. So they've actually used this opportunity, since tiny homes wasn't really a thing in 2006, it's become a thing now. They wanted to differentiate between a recreational vehicle and a tiny home, because some tiny homes are built on chassis and driven where they want them to go, much like a manufacturer home, but obviously much smaller. But they wanted to make sure that they weren't trying to use the recreational vehicle exemption for tiny homes that are meant to be permanently
Permanent place.
Built. Yeah. The Planning Board felt that, given our regulations, just regular building regulations, if you keep something over six months on a site, it needs to be permanently built anyway. So we kind of felt like that was not really necessary. Do you want me to go through a few more, see if another one?
Well, I was paging through here, and I don't see it now, so.
It's a lot to come through.
Should have made a note of it.
The non-conversion, I don't know if that was an issue. That's just not allowing unfinished space to be converted to finished space. So if you have an elevated basement, for instance, that's not supposed to be inhabited.
And I noticed in there that we have the authorization to go back and check those that are in the floodplain for any additions that are clearly a violation of putting electrical and whatever in that area.
Yeah. Equipment has to be obviously elevated out of the floodplain. You know, existing is existing, but when we go to change something, when we go to permit something, then we have to look at it.
And I contend that we would not initially permit something in the floodplain.
Right.
So we would know if it was converted.
Yeah. Okay.
Most of this stuff is already in the ordinance. I don't want to belabor the point, so.
I understand, and I've looked through it, and it looks pretty much like the Planning Board has looked at it very thoroughly and made their recommendations, and I'll make a motion that we accept this.
We need
Oh, we got to do a public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
Yeah. I'm going to open the floor up. Anybody that would like to speak in regards to this is welcome to come up. We're going to start over here. Anyone? Anyone? How about on this side? Anybody in the back room? Nobody's moving. Okay. All right. Well, I actually should have voted to go into public hearing, I guess, but did I need to get a motion to go in?
You can close the public hearing, and then discuss some vote on the ordinance.
Okay. All right. I'll take a motion to close it.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I would like to make a motion that we accept as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Libby. Thank you.
So that was as Planning Board
Has recommended, yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we will have a discussion of alcoholic beverages before noon on Sunday.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. Just a quick recap from our last meeting. As you folks know, the North Carolina Senate Bill
Let these folks leave if they need to get out of here. I guess we'll shut it up. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just a quick recap from our last meeting. Commissioners, remember that we were talking about North Carolina Senate Bill 155 that allows counties to expand hours of sale of alcoholic beverages on Sundays to be able to begin at 10:00 a.m. at licensed premises. This does include stores and restaurants. Applies to the sale of malt beverages, unfortified wine, fortified wine, and mixed beverages. You have a copy of the proposed ordinance in your packet, and just a quick reminder that if the Board does approve this new ordinance, it would only apply in the unincorporated parts of Alamance County. And at the last meeting, the Board of Commissioners asked us to set a public hearing for tonight, so this time, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to open a public hearing, that'd be
That would be good. And we will. We will open for a public hearing on this, and we'll just go back around the room again. And I think you guys, some of you are on the list. I know Jim Albright was on the list, and I see my wife, Gail, coming up here. She's not on the list, but she's, you can come to the podium, ma'am.
My name is Gail Boswell. I have lived in Alamance County all my life, and I am not in favor of the sale of alcohol in our county before noon. It just does not seem to me that this would be the highest and best calling for our county. And I want to share with you something that my mama taught me. I bet your mama's taught you, too, Commissioner Boswell. I know your mama taught you this. And that is that just because everybody else is doing it, does not make it right. Thank you. Thank you.
Jim?
Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank you for holding a public hearing on what is being called the Brunch Bill. As you may be aware, this bill was pushed by the North Carolina Restaurant and Lodging Association. Their term is nothing new, as North Carolina is the 47th state to approve such a bill. Their website says, "Don't let your community be left in the dust," and it enables you to find out who's brunching today. Locally, of course, this includes Elon, Meven, and Burlington. I like the way that Times News framed this issue recently, and I quote, "For clarity's sake, while the measure is known as the Brunch Bill, you don't have to be sitting in front of an expensive plate of eggs Benedict to get a drink Sunday mornings under the law. It covers everything from mimosas on the terrace to Morgan David behind the dumpster, possibly why the request for the vote came from a convenience store chain rather than a restaurant." End of quote. Based on this description, the bill could also be called the Dumpster Drinking Bill, but I suppose that just doesn't sound quite as good. I believe when alcohol wins, our community loses. Many of the groups that Commissioner Byrd mentioned for us to remember are adversely affected by alcohol. Alcohol wins with their profits, and our society loses when it is left holding the bill, their bill. Alcohol refuses to acknowledge or look at the rest of their story, the story that includes a jail one block away with many inmates who are incarcerated for alcohol-related offenses. Because alcohol use is legal and pervasive, it plays a particularly strong role in the relationship to crime and other social problems. Alcohol is a factor in 40% of all violent crimes today, according to the Department of Justice, 37% of almost 2 million convicted offenders currently in jail report they were drinking at the time of their arrest. Close to 70% of alcohol-related violent acts occur in the home. Alcohol also doesn't want you to hear the story about the toll it takes on our youth, as underage drinking has many negative personal and societal side effects. And where do our youth get their alcohol? In addition to their own home, they self-purchase, and just how easy is that? Not that hard, based on this past Friday's law, is that my buzzer going off?
You had the old Chinese.
Based on this past Friday's law enforcement operation, where eight of 17 businesses in Burlington failed to verify legal age to purchase, these were 17-year-old kids, four years under the legal age, that area businesses were caught selling to. I recently met with a 17-year-old young man who was arrested and jailed for assault. His story sadly included self-purchasing alcohol at a local convenience store before he got upset over a situation that resulted in him losing his temper and physically assaulting someone. In closing, I just wanted to address the other side of this issue that is so often not even discussed. As it currently stands, one can purchase alcohol 19 hours a day, six days a week, Monday through Saturday, and 12 hours on Sunday, for a total of 126 hours out of 168, and I believe that is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone in the back room? Hey, Latoya, you must be Latoya.
Yes, sir.
Hey.
Good evening.
Yes?
Okay. Just hang on one second.
That was key.
I just wanted to first thank you for having this public hearing, because I know it wasn't a requirement, but I did want to express my concern about it, just as the gentleman mentioned, all the other days of the week, people have plenty of time to buy alcohol. I don't think we should change the hours on Sunday to make it 10 o'clock instead of 12 o'clock. Just as, I'm gonna say, a former alcoholic myself, I didn't have any issues waiting to 12 o'clock, because, and not trying to encourage drinking, but people would do what they wanna do. I don't think that allowing this bill to go through needs to encourage, you know, encourage them to do what they don't need to do. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
This is the Brunch Bill, I hope you recognize that.
Yes, it is. The only thing I wanted to say is, yeah, I don't think it really matters if we change the law to two-hours difference with the sale of alcohol, I just was thinking, it seemed like we're spending a lot of time on this discussion, it would be really great if we could get back to the discussion about white supremacy and all of these symbols that actually show white supremacy and embody white supremacy, whether people really wanna acknowledge that or not, it's a hard thing to acknowledge, but we have, we're gonna have to if we wanna get through this, so I hope we can get back to that discussion, thank you.
All right. Just gotta turn.
Are we done with the
I don't know yet, I'm waiting, anybody else coming? I guess that was it, clappers. Okay. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
And now, we will have discussion and see where to go with this.
Well, if I'm gonna start, if you don't mind.
That'll be fine.
Amy, I think we probably hit something too there, okay if I go?
Of course, please. Thank you, President.
I'm with teenagers, basically, six days a week, thousands of them in a period of time. And I tell them that alcohol is the biggest drug out there. You know, you can sit and talk to them about marijuana, hard drugs, cocaine, heroin, whatever, but that alcohol is the biggest drug that they're gonna be challenged with. I mean, they're coming to school, literally, some of them, in certain areas, under the influence. Putting alcohol in bottles, clear alcohol, vodka, or whatever, and they're coming to school, literally drunk, sad. An unbelievable percentage of accidents on our highways are caused by people under the influence. The legal drinking age is 21, used to be 18, and the government decided, well, we'll bump up the age to 21, and beer industry, alcohol industry raised cane over it, and they said, well, but we're gonna, let's compromise, let's take it to 21, but we're gonna put more alcohol in a beer. Beer used to be 3.2, now it's almost 6%. You drink six beers now, you're about as loaded as you were if you drank 10 back when I was a teenager, or a young person. And everybody agreed to that. If you look at the bill in Raleigh, and look at who voted for it, first of all, money lobbyists drove it, drove the bill, in my opinion. The industry that was mentioned about hotels, restaurants, and whatever, they drove the bill with lobbying. And I bet you, if you looked at the contribution list, you would see a trend. In my opinion, laws shouldn't be written that way. Values shouldn't be judged that way. But the vote in the House was 73, 4, 40 against. Now, if you break that down on a partisan basis, and I hate to do it, but, I mean, it's listed, so why not, and this is a partisan board, it was a partisan vote in Raleigh. The 73 that voted for it, there were 40, all Democrats voted for it, every one of them, in the House, and I'm talking about the House. 33 that voted for it, along with the 40, making a total of 73, were Republicans. And if you go down to who voted against the bill, four Democrats opposed it, 36 Republicans opposed it. There were more Republicans that were against the bill than there were for it. And my logic is, if I'd been in Raleigh, I'd voted with those that said no, versus those that said yes. And why should I go opposite here? Why should I go for when I'd have definitely gone against in Raleigh? It's clear that, in my opinion, the 36 that opposed it from the Republicans in Raleigh were the most conservative people. Now, I know some people don't like those labels, but it's there, in my opinion. I would've definitely been in the no vote. So I can't reverse it and do something different here. So I can't support changing anything that we've got along those lines, I agree with the people that were against the change of the rules. That's all I'm gonna say. Sir, I don't have a problem with the proposed rule change, because I respect former Councilman Jim Albright's remarks, and Jim and I worked together for several years on the ACTA Board, and he's a man of great integrity, and I respect what he said. And I'm certainly sensitive to the substance abuse issues that we have in our community, or I wouldn't have included them in my remarks for the moment of silence, but I really don't believe, I mean, we're, this country went through a period of prohibition, and that really didn't prevent substance abuse. And this two-hours that we're talking about happens to be on a Sunday morning, I don't know why Sunday was chosen to not sell alcohol before noon, as opposed to other days of the week, I suppose it has something to do with religion, and, but, you know, there are lots of different faiths, as I also mentioned earlier, and even in the Christian faith, we have some denominations who celebrate the Sabbath on Saturday, and I just don't see where it's going to make a difference in the overall impact on any kind of substance abuse issues that we have. Yeah, I'm a Democrat, but I'm not, I had no idea about that partisan divide there on this particular issue in the State House. I had another aspect to say, but I think that there are lots of people, and once in a while, maybe once a year, or maybe twice a year, I find myself in a position where I would like to have a mixed drink at brunch in a restaurant, I don't care, I don't need to go out and buy it between the hours of 10 and 12 at a convenience store, but it's, you know, prohibition went away a long time ago, and I think that it's a matter of self-control and dealing with substance abuse problems, and that's a whole nother issue, I just don't think that it's related to adding two hours to give people the liberty of being able to purchase a mixed drink at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock on a Sunday morning. So I'm in favor of the proposed ordinance change.
Well, I kinda think about conservatism as being that people can generally do what they wanna do, as long as they are not hurting anybody else, that, you know, if somebody wants to drink beer, or if somebody wants to run out and get some beer, when they're on their way up to Lake Highco, they're going up 62, they wanna stop at the store, because they forgot to get some the day before on Saturday, you know, they're gonna be drinking it while they're fishing, or whatever, with their friends, as long as they're obeying all the other laws about highway safety, and boating safety, and stuff, and there's laws of that nature. I think that people should be able to do what they wanna do, and if they're not hurting somebody else, you know, if you think somebody's gonna watch the ballgame, I guess the NFL starts at 12:30, I guess, somebody wants to run to the store, you know, country people, it can take you a while to get to the store and get back, wants to run to the store before the ballgames start, and then settle into the chair and watch the ballgame, maybe have some people over, have a little cookout, I think that's their own business. And if I don't wanna buy beer on Sunday morning, I don't have to, nobody has to do it if they don't want to, but if somebody wants to, then, and the General Assembly has provided for that vehicle for us to discuss it, then I would be in favor of, I'd be in favor of the ordinance, allowing the sale of alcohol beverages before noon on Sunday.
Well, as you heard my wife say, just because everybody does it, doesn't mean we have to. I had a discussion with the Senator who co-sponsored the bill, and his words were, well, 47 states have already done it, well, maybe we can be different. I don't know where the two-hours will really make a difference in the number of people drinking on Sunday, or any of that, but I don't see anything with the law as it was So I'm gonna have to vote against it, and I'm gonna have to ask our county attorney to help decide how does this vote go when we have a 2-2 split, it sounds.
If you take your vote, and it's 2-2, then the ordinance does not pass. That's the majority of those voting, that's
Okay.
Can we table it till we have a full board?
I would just soon go ahead and get it off the table, I think I made Paul Billson be on this too, so...
Well, I guess for formality, I'll make the motion that we approve the ordinance allowing the sale of alcohol beverages before noon on Sunday.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Aye. 2-2, so I think you've answered our question, so we broke the trend.
The ordinance does not pass.
Okay. All right, very good. It was a 2-2 vote, and majority would have to carry the vote.
So as a point of order, can it be brought up again?
Yes.
Yeah, you can bring it up again.
Isn't there a...
Time limit.
Well, no, isn't there, doesn't somebody have, who voted, how's that work? Doesn't it have to be somebody who voted for it to bring it up? Isn't that a technicality?
I believe it's somebody who voted against
Against it? Gotta go one way or the other, right? Okay.
But it's true, what the Chair has just said, your vote would still be 3-2, but you're free to do that as a board.
But who has to bring it up technically?
Well, the Board Chair could put it on the agenda.
I can put, I mean, we can put it back on the agenda, but...
If you wanted to do it again, and have another public hearing, we just want some notice, maybe, so we can be able to get the advertisement out, but you're not required to have the public hearing, so you wouldn't have
Yeah, I think we've already had our public hearing, I think we just need, we can't bring it back up to the Board if that's...
Let me ask a technical question, though, all right, let's say it stays as it is, or, you know, even with the next vote, are distillers still able to do what the law also said they could do, or would that be shot down as well?
They can do, they can do in licensed premises in any municipality near that's up.
Yeah, it's only changing county, and only thing in county
Well, one in the county, let's say you had a distiller out in the county.
Right. You wouldn't be able to sell alcohol until noon on Sunday.
Got you, okay. Then there was also a ruling in there about bottles that he sells one per year, I don't know where you'd keep up with that, and they would change that from one to five.
Right, that doesn't, this ordinance would affect
Wouldn't affect, okay, that's what I was trying to
I think, I think the title is also misleading, Brunch Bill. It, I was unclear, actually, was it, convenience stores will be included, but
That's right.
It is included, but that's really what we're dealing with in our county, if they need to go across the Burlington line and pick up a six-pack, they're welcome to do so, but right now. All right. Next, we will have the discussion of the Graham-Hookdale property, Carnotle Building in specific.
I had a discussion with Ms. Peterson, your Board Madam, there she is, contacted me seven weeks ago, and expressed an interest in the Graham-Hookdale building, the Carnotle Clinic in San Antonio. I explained to her the process, that the way we've done this in the past, the Board sets a public hearing, the Board would like to entertain selling the property, I would recommend that we do it for sealed bids. I also would like to let the Board know that we've got two other people interested in this, two other entities interested in it. One of is the Piedmont Health Services group.
One of is the Piedmont Health Services group. They have been and looked at the building with their architect, I believe, and Ms. Peterson has been in looking at the building as well. There's also another interested group. The City of Burlington has a possible economic development interest, and now we're talking three parties interested in it. Ms. Peterson's group, it's much like the property that we owned on Webb Avenue. The county owned the opportunities for everyone building. It needed a $500,000 roof, it needed air conditioning and heating, and they purchased the building. On the sealed bid process, and they paid, I think it was about $1,000 was their bid, but the other consideration was the services they provide to the physically handicapped and mentally handicapped people in this county, providing work for them. That's something the Board could consider when entertaining a bid with Ms. Peterson's group, because she does a lot of good work. Susan Osborne can give you the details on that. But my purpose here tonight is to ask you, if you are prepared to consider bids on that property, well, I would recommend we do it at a public hearing a month from tonight, October sixteenth, where we have a public hearing and hear from these folks. And then if your Board does decide to have a sale by sealed bid, what we would do would be authorize it, we'd advertise it, we'd set a date for the bids, no less than thirty days out, and then all the bids would be received and opened. The last time we did this, we opened it in the manager's office. And then we present the high bid to the Board, and the Board makes the decision at that time whether to sell it or whether or not sell it. But the building does need a lot of work, and in order for Ms. Peterson's folks to do that kind of work, she would have to own it, and she would have to borrow money to fix the roof. The roof is the biggest problem, I understand, about $300,000 to repair the roof on that building. It also has some mold issues. That's why I suggested to Ms. Peterson that she go visit during the rain shower last week, which she did. I also told her to stop by and pick up some buckets, because I know it, I know it leaks. I didn't want to mislead her. I didn't want to mislead her. It's not in the best of shape, but it's a great opportunity. We've got three good groups of folks interested in it, so I'd like the Board to consider setting a public hearing for October sixteenth, which is our evening meeting, to discuss these offers further. So we're not going to decide at the October sixteenth meeting, we're not going to receive bids before, we're just going to have a public hearing, then if we decide to open it up for bids, we'll do it, then... That's correct. ... bids will come in later, and then we'll decide on it. A month from tonight, if the Board hears from these folks and decides which way you want to go, we'll set it up for a, I would recommend a sealed bid, seems to be the best way to do it. In the first party that you mentioned, what did you say about, then they looked at the building with an architect? Yes, Mr. Brian Toomey of the Piedmont Health Services brought Hamlet and Associates over, and our maintenance folks took them through the building, and they did an analysis of it. I haven't heard from them since, but Ms. Peterson is interested in the building, and she does do good work with young men that are troubled in this community, and I've gotten to know her pretty well. Nice lady. And, you know, this is all in, putting it in perspective, we have a lot of buildings, a lot of square footage, and we've really determined this is excess, I mean, we don't really have, and it's a live building right now, given the needs that it has.
And the more we let it sit, the more it's going to cost somebody to fix it, it'll be us or somebody else.
I think there's been some discussion, too, about the possibility of some of our nonprofits that are in some of our other county buildings possibly being able to relocate to this location, which would be very helpful for space in some of our other county properties that we have. And I think there's been discussion about some access to the lot and some things like that, so it's, it sounds like it's a reasonable thing for the Board to consider.
She can give you more details about the type of things that she does.
And I cut her off earlier, so I'm going to ask her if she would just come back and kind of give us a briefing on what you're doing.
Can I give you guys a little bit?
Sure. Scott?
Okay, maybe I will be a little bit calmer now that I've heard a lot of people speak. I'll tell you a little bit about myself and how I ended up here in Alamance County. My name is Melissa Peterson, I've been in Alamance County since 1994. I came here with four children in tow and $500, and kind of settled on Spring Street and worked with a lot of kids and single women in our community. A lot of kids that were having some problems with substance abuse, homelessness, and just pretty much struggling a lot. And so I ended up starting a group home across the street from my house. I wanted, I have six children of my own, but I wanted to be a mother to some motherless children. Some of you guys may have heard of my son, Michael Bingham, they call him the Burlington Brit. He's an Olympian, he just received an Olympic medal from 2008 Olympics, and I'm real proud of him for that, too. Getting back to what we do, Alamance Academy, of course, started out residential treatment. We work with a lot of children that are at risk in our community. We've had at least eight boys go to college. And then after that, I started working in Cardinal, asked me about doing some services as far as peer support services and individual support services, working with people that are homeless, some of the communities, we have a lot of group homes, you guys know, it's over 140. So I worked with Cardinal in transitioning at least eighty people out into independent living and having sustainable, stable living here in our community. We work with a lot of other nonprofits, we're real close with DSS, with like CPS cases, a lot of the ladies may lose their Medicaid funding, we still serve them, in helping, keeping families united so kids don't get displaced. I worked real hard at putting myself out of the group home business, to be honest with you. That's why we started doing community-type work. Some of the other things, I did some of the numbers that we have from a survey that we took a couple of years, I mean, two years ago, we had ninety-two percent client satisfaction rate, we had ninety-eight percent reduction in medical overnight stays at the hospital for the adults that had mental health issues. We teamed them up with peer-to-peer type services, so a lot of times, even if the police come, they have our emergency number, and they call our agency. And so, you know, we go out or send someone out to help stabilize situations with people like that. We work with allied churches, and helping people find places to live, and also taking funds out of our own agency to help, like, furnish places, to help people stabilize. And we work with, like I said, other group homes, helping them to learn to transition people so that people have regular lives, so we do a lot of work with that. And substance abuse, too, with adolescents and adults, we do that type work. And whether someone has insurance or not, I mean, we take care of it the best way we can. And we, like, we work with, like, the Furniture Ministry, they work real close with us in helping get furniture for people that need that, that are homeless. And as a matter of fact, when my group home burned down in July, people probably saw that on the news, you know, they were the first to call and say, Mo, when you find a place, we got the furniture. You know, we, so, and we also want to work with other nonprofits so that we can be in one location, and that we can serve people a lot easier and have continuity of services. We do med management, we have doctors there, so people need medication to kind of treat their mental health symptoms, we do that. A lot of that is in, I guess, I say in good faith, because a lot of times people don't have Medicaid, they don't have money, that doesn't mean they don't get treatment. And I don't know, have anything else to say? Maybe Susan might be able to support me in that, I don't want to bore you guys, but we work real hard, and we want to kind of link other nonprofits together, and I think just being where that location would mean a lot to our agency right now. I'm in two different buildings, well, three, actually, my residential treatment, our substance abuse treatment, which is on Rosenwall, we've been there since 2008, and we have an office that we do treatment right down Church Street, in the middle of Church Street. So if we could put all those things together, I think that we could offer a lot more services to our community, too. It would be a lot more effective.
Good location there for it.
It is.
All right, very good. Well, I'll take a motion then to have a public hearing on this at our October sixteenth meeting.
Soon.
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. All right, next, Emergency Services Radio Replacement Project.
Commissioners, I want to give you an update on our Emergency Service Radio Replacement Project. There's no need for action on this tonight, it's just to let you know where we are and what's going on and what you can expect. So in 2008, Alamance County financed a, quite a large radio replacement project. Then, at the time, the idea was to get Alamance County Emergency Services, including law enforcement and EMS and all of our groups, as well as the rest of the county emergency services on the Viper Network. And at the time, the county decided the best way to do that was to purchase the radios, not only for ourselves, but for all these other agencies, too. So in 2008, the county financed all these radios, and the total amount was $4,650,000. So all the radios have since been paid off, they were paid off in fiscal years sixteen, seventeen. These radios are now reaching approximately nine years old, which is getting close to end of life for these radios, and it's time for us to start thinking about purchasing new ones. But this time, we've told volunteer fire departments in all the cities, the folks that we bought for last time, that we're not planning to do that for them this time, we're only looking to purchase radios for Alamance County departments, which would be Sheriff's Office, EMS, Emergency Management, and the Fire Marshal's Office, and C-Com as well. So we're looking to try to do this, and we've been working with Motorola reps to try to get this all in one order so we can take advantage of both discounts. We've told the other municipal and volunteer departments that they can either join our order, they can come on with us and take advantage of the discounts that we get, or they can buy on their own but still get our discount if they're in a certain timeframe, they can take advantage of the negotiations that we've done. So our communications folks have worked with all of our county departments, and we've come up with a total radio replacement need of $2,630,974.20. We would be looking at three, at this time, three volunteer fire departments have indicated they would come on board with us and actually join our order. These three volunteer fire departments are in Snow Camp, E.M. Holt, and Northeast Alamance, so these departments have said they would actually come in with us. There are other departments around the county, both police and fire, city and volunteers, that will be ordering along with us, but they'll be doing it completely on their own. The groups that are coming in with us, they would agree to pay us back, we would front the money, make one big order, and then charge them annually for the money that they would owe us for their radios. So the total county order with, including the three volunteer fire departments, would be $3,019,000, $3,019,810. What we plan to do is, as we did last time, we will send out an RFP to find the best financing that we can, try to figure out if it's best to finance or lease these new radios, and we'll be coming back to you with what we find. So it'll probably be, I would imagine, a month or so before we come back. Hopefully, in October, we'll be bringing you a proposal, once we find the most cost-effective. And we'll say that we have budgeted money this year for the first payment for these, we budgeted that money, hoping that if we get a great deal, we'll be able to afford it and get these radios replaced. So if you have any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them. Again, there's no action for you tonight, I'll be coming back with the best deal that we can get on these new radios. Does anyone have any questions for...
Is there a reason the other departments wouldn't want to tag on to this? I mean, what's...
I think we only have three that are actually going to be a part of our specific order, so they'll, we will put an order out, their radios will come to us, we'll do an agreement with each department, and they'll pay us back. The other departments, there are a number of them, they are going to take advantage of the price but just not go through the county. So a lot of departments, besides just these three, are ordering radios, they're just not going to become a part of our purchase, but they'll still get the...
They get the same pricing on it?
Yes, that's correct.
How does this measure up to what the City of Burlington did with their radio situation?
I think they're looking at having to switch over to, I'd really be interested in seeing what the lease would cost us. What happens every so often, Motorola changes something that causes us to have to go again, I don't know which would be the best to buy or to lease, but if you lease them, then when they change something over, you continue to do that.
And we will be looking at both options, what's cost-effective and what's in the best interest of these emergency service departments, too.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. I think you're still up.
Yes, I do have an item that I'd like to ask you to consider for action. So we're asking the Board of Commissioners to consider and approve a lease to acquire space, to obtain space for our emergency equipment. Alamance County Emergency Management Office and the Fire Marshal's Office have equipment, emergency equipment stored all across Alamance County, so I think we're going to see a quick map of where all of our emergency equipment is. Now, this includes decon trailers, equipment trailers, right now, there are fire departments, particularly fire departments all around Alamance County. Anywhere that any fire department had room, we could find any room, we've stuck some piece of equipment. And again, these are trailers, decon trailers, foam trailers. Soon, we're going to have message boards that we would be able to use out on the interstate as well as light towers. So the Fire Marshal, the Fire Marshal's Office and the Emergency Management Office have worked together and found one central location that is available to lease, to relocate all this equipment to. If we take advantage of this, if we do this, we'll put all the equipment in one spot, it will allow for decreased response times, they won't have to go to one place to get anything that they need. The location is central, in the heart of Alamance County. It would also make it easier for the Fire Marshal and the Emergency Management Department to take care of the equipment instead of having to go all over the county. So you can see, we go from being all over the county to one central location, right there, the heart of Burlington, make it very easy to get this, this equipment anywhere in the county relatively fast. The property that we would be looking at leasing, the lease is included in your packet, is located at 2115 Stanley Drive, Burlington, which we have another, I think you can kind of see, it's right off of Maple Avenue, this is the former Byrd's tractor property, right off of Maple Avenue, good central location. We're looking at approximately 5,200 square feet of space to lease. Much of this equipment needs to be stored inside, it has things that are sensitive to environmental changes, so it needs to be kept out of the rain, it needs to be kept in space, it's climate-controlled, that's available at this location. We're looking to lease this property for one year, with an option to renew for one additional year. We thought that was, we're working on our facility plan now, we think that, you know, that would give us time to get a facility plan in place, we'll know, is this a good option for a longer term or not. It'd also give us opportunity to work with the property owners and make sure that this location is a good one to deploy from, too. The cost for the lease is $1,100 per month. If the Board approves this lease tonight, it will be effective immediately, and the funds for this first year's lease are already in Emergency Management's budget. So we knew we were going to be bringing this request to the Board of Commissioners, we're going to have to budget this money, it is there in the Emergency Management Department's budget. So I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
For all of those other locations, are we paying anything for those locations?
I do not believe so.
So there's no cost savings?
No.
Other than that?
Being centrally located, yeah, I think it may be a little bit of a savings for the apartment, so when you have to go...
I would say time and, the time and resources spent to get out, all of these need to be visited and checked and make sure that they're in proper working order. When you're all around the county, it makes it a little more difficult, but the main thing is the deployment.
Yeah.
I think we have some, you know, equipment like generators, the very large generators are located far out in the county, and when you need those, you need it pretty quick, so to run out there and get them and bring them back, this would aid emergency folks in getting stuff to scenes quickly.
So I just want it to be known that this lease agreement is with the Byrd's Limited Partnership, no relation.
Oh, come on. You can't. You sure you can't?
We toured the property, it appears that it will be conducive to the needs that both departments have, so.
All right. That's where the old Byrd Gray drive-in yesterday, if I'm not mistaken.
It's, it's still in good shape, and the height of the interior space allows for some of our taller trailers and equipment to be stored there, so I think Emergency Management and Fire Marshal's Office are excited about being able to put all this in one place and get it, get it all together, so.
And it's fenced, a lot is fenced, then. And it's fenced, the lot's fenced in, too, which is good for security. I am curious, what was up at AO?
The generator.
Just the generator?
Yes, sir. We do, we do have a Fire Marshal that responds throughout the county, variety, could crank this equipment and make sure it's ready, in case, and it takes but have they can go to all these places.
Yeah, sure. That'd be a good thing to have in one location. Alright, any other questions? I'll take a motion, if anyone is interested in making a motion to do so. Thank you, Tim.
Second.
Thank you, Amy, all in favor? I wanna know the name of that shop. That's our entertainment for the night.
He turned it down and it still rung.
Lease for Alamance County EMS space.
So, this lease is, we're asking the Board tonight to consider and approve a lease for space for Alamance County EMS for our medic unit and staff person. We have a medic unit and a staff person that stays at the Meven Fire Station. This allows for a quick response, this is not an ambulance, this is a medic unit, so it's a quick response vehicle, and the staff person, if they're not on a call, they go back to Meven Fire and wait for the next call. It allows for us to have a quick response for medical attention in the Meven area. The lease will be in place until June 30th of 2020, and the cost for the space will be $450 a month, and that is to help the city with the utility costs that the staff person would, in, cause to happen. So, these funds, again, are in the EMS Department's budget, and be happy to ask, entertain any questions.
I move approval.
Thank you, Bob.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Then you're up next.
And I have, I have to report, so that's all I have.
Commissioners' response?
I don't have anything.
I think we're pretty well done, then.
Well, I just wanna say, we had a good planning meeting this morning. We're planning this opioid summit for December the 8th, it's going to be at the new Lamb's Chapel on Alamance Road. And this is primarily for community leaders, we're going to be inviting all elected officials throughout the county, and a bunch of others as well, to bring attention to the opioid crisis that we're having, and hopefully come up with some solutions to help address it as well. And I'd like to say, Amy and I attended the, as was mentioned earlier, this forum on homelessness last week, and very interesting, we heard from speakers from Mecklenburg County, and the things that they're doing in Mecklenburg County to address homelessness. And homelessness does cost our community quite a bit, and we can, there's opportunities to save overall our community money by better addressing the homelessness problem that we have.
I'd like to recognize one of our school board members, I see you got put in the back room tonight, Brian Feeley, welcome. And it was a good meeting we had this morning with the school board, and learned a lot about the lottery that I wasn't up to date on, so that was a very good meeting. Any other comments? We will be adjourned.
Thank you for watching the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting. Meetings of the Commissioners' Board occur on the first and third Monday of each month in the Commissioners' Chambers at the County Office Building at 124 West Elm Street in Graham. Typically, the first meeting of the month is at 9:00 a.m., and the second meeting of the month is at 7:00 p.m. Changes to the meeting schedule will be posted on the county website at www.alamance-nc.com. The video of this meeting is broadcast on Time Warner's Public Access Channel on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month at 10:00 p.m. You can also access this meeting through our website at www.alamance-nc.com. Please visit our website for more information about watching meetings online. For technical questions regarding this meeting's online or television broadcast, please contact our county webmaster at webmaster@alamance-nc.com. Please note that this address is for technical questions only. Questions regarding the content of Commissioners' meetings may be made to the Commissioners themselves. You can find their contact information at the county website...